Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for attending our September school board meeting. First of all, I want to thank Judge Atkins for swearing in of our new board members. O'Neal Henley, Debbie Gaul, Sherri Franks, and Andre Donnell, along with Janice Hampton that was re-elected. So let's give them a round of applause. Looking forward to working with each one of them. We will also practice social distancing and also the county extended the masks, extended for two additional weeks. So we will follow those guidelines. To start the meeting, I'm going to ask Commissioner Tommy Gobble, if he would come down, please, and open us up with prayer. Stanford pledge, please. Thank you. We're going to make a small adjustment in the agenda. We have Chris and Chris from Crocker Construction. They're here to give us an update on JCM and the Madison projects. So would you guys want to come?
All right. I'm Chris Alexander. I'm with Healthy Community LLC. We are the developers of the Jackson School project, the public-private partnership for JCM and Madison Academic. I guess for a lot of the new board members, you may not know, but we've been asked to come to the monthly board meetings just to give a general construction update. We provide Ray Washington and Dr. Catlett a monthly written report that we typically get to them around the 25th of each month. And they should be, you know, y'all may be getting those reports. And if you get them, you know, feel free to reach out to us if you have any particular questions. But we do have those written reports in place, but we also want to come before you once a month to be able to answer any questions that you may have. I've got Chris Rice here, that's our construction manager with Crocker Construction, to give you a general update of how things are progressing with each school. We're real pleased with, you know, the scheduling and the progress that we've made. We're still on schedule and despite these crazy times we're living in, we're getting a lot of good, good success. So Chris, you want to give an update?
Pretty much a continuation of what we talked about last month. At JCM, we're still doing a select demolition. Plumbing, electrical, and HVAC work continues, is ongoing. The roof is about 90% complete. They're still working. Interior framing has begun. Concrete work on the front addition has begun and the fieldhouse concrete continues. Steel for the front addition is expected about the middle of next month. So you'll start seeing a lot more from the road out there in a month or month, month and a half. At Madison, we're still erecting steel. We're doing plumbing and electric underground. I don't know if you've been by there, but if you go by there, you can kind of get a sense for the mass of the structure and the presence it's going to make on the campus. So we're pretty excited about that. We've got about another month of steel work. The structure's up, but there's a lot of detailed work to do until we move to the next phase. Any questions? Okay, we'll be back next month.
Before they leave, do anyone have any questions for them?
Well, I just had one more thing to say. I was talking with Ray a little bit earlier. For a lot of the new board members too, that aren't that familiar with the construction of both the buildings, we'd be glad to help facilitate a tour and a meeting, you know, that's convenient when y'all can all come and we can go inside and tour around JCM and then also go over to the Madison site. And we'll coordinate it when our architects with Luny Rick's Kiss out of Memphis can be there too, to answer any other questions that y'all may have. So y'all, just as a board, may talk about what would be a good day and time for that, and we'd love to help put that together.
Excellent idea. Thanks, guys. Any other questions for those guys? Thank you.
Pete, I would like to talk about-
Go ahead, AJ, go ahead.
We can do it through email or something, not necessarily tonight, but something recurring where every, you know, 60 days or 90 days, we can walk through. Because obviously, we can drive through, but I don't know a lot about what details are happening by just driving through. So I'd like to see updates of kind of what's going on. If we can attend, we can. If we can't, we can't. But I would like to see us have something recurring.
Sounds good. And we'll get, with Dr. King and his team, they'll coordinate that for us. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, election of 2020, 2021 board officers. Of course, we have, we'd be electing chairman, of course, vice chair, parliamentarian, you know, legislative liaisons. First of all, let's start with any nominations for chair.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate you as continuous as board chair. As we have gone through the pandemic, there was not time enough or consistency for you to fulfill the role that you should have, fulfill the role. And so at this point in time, I would just like to nominate you to continue in the position as board chair.
I second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other nominations? The chair?
I'd like to nominate AJ Black. I'm sorry, AJ Massey.
Nomination for AJ Massey?
Second.
Second. Any other nominations? No, this is for chair.
I'm still the parliamentarian, Ms. Hampton, and I was thinking I was out of order.
All right. We got two nominations.
Mr. Johnson, as a point of order, Ms. Franks nominated Mr. Massey as chair. Ms. Hampton seconded it, but-
But I could not because I thought she said, he said vice chair.
Okay.
So I had to correct that because I nominated-
So you withdraw your second?
I would withdraw my motion as-
So Ms. Franks has a motion on the floor. Would anyone like to second Ms. Franks' motion? Okay, for lack of a second, the motion does die.
Okay. With that, uh-
Mr. Johnson-
Go ahead, parliamentarian.
You're, I'm sorry. Your name is slated for the chair, so we're going to vote.
Okay. Everyone ready to vote? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, board, for your support. And I think we're in a good space. We've got a superintendent in place. He's a great team. They've done some excellent work in unprecedented times with this pandemic. So I think our role is to continue with policy and governance and supporting his leadership. Thank you. Next, vice chair, any nominations? Vice chair? Ms. Black?
Chairman, I nominate Janice Hampton.
Janice Hampton, second? Debbie's second? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? No other nominations? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carried. Janice Hampton as vice chair. Parliamentarians, any nominations?
Mr. Chair.
Shannon is current parliamentarian. Shannon Stewart.
Chair, I nominate Shannon.
Nominate Shannon Stewart, if you could get a second? Shannon decline. Any other nominations?
I nominate AJ Massey.
AJ Massey nominated parliamentarian. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
You got a second? Any other nominations? No other nominations? All in favor? AJ Massey, parliamentarian? You know him signed aye? Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next, our legislative liaisons. Any nominations?
Mr. Chair, and given much consideration, because I've been vice chair so many times, I would like to just pour my motion out for vice chair. I should have said something prior to. But if it's okay, let me get me a bag and let us go back to nominate someone else as vice chair.
So you withdrawing?
No, I'm looking at data. Okay.
Okay.
Attorney Thomas, is that kosher? Okay. Okay. But we-
You want to make that motion? Okay, you got a motion to reconsider? Second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor? Let it be known by a sign of aye? Those opposed? Motion carries. Go back, nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Doris Black.
Doris Black nominated.
I would have to nominate AJ Massey.
AJ Massey? Is Doris going to second? This is for vice chair. Doris was nominated. We didn't get a second from Doris.
I'm sorry, what?
You were nominated for vice chair. So there's a second for Doris? No second?
Okay.
Okay, any other nominations?
Ms. Hampton nominated Mr. Massey-
Right.
-as vice chair. And I think Mr. Henley, did you second?
You seconded, right. We got a motion to second. Any other nominations? No other nominations? All in favor? Let it be known by a sign of aye?
Okay, hold. Can I make-
Go ahead.
I don't know what to do. Because we just elected AJ as the parliamentarian, but we changed the policy and it's actually chairman pro 10, if I remember that correctly. They essentially serve as the parliamentarian. No, you're the parliamentarian. Dr. King, do you remember?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Okay, so disregard that. We just elected Mr. Massey, the parliamentarian. Can he serve as vice chair and parliamentarian? If not, we'll have to-
He's breaking out the book.
Okay.
I'm willing to do both.
Okay, there you go.
Any other nominations? No other nominations?
No.
All in favor of AJ Massey as vice chair? It'd be known by a sign of aye? Those opposed? Motion carried. It's back to legislative liaisons. Any nominations? Legislative liaisons.
I nominate Doris Black.
Doris Black for legislative liaisons. Can I get a second?
You know, I'm so sorry. I don't, I can't hear well or whatever. What's going on now?
You were nominated for legislative liaisons.
Yes.
And we have a second.
I nominated you, Ms. Black. Can you hear me?
Okay, any other nominations? Any other nominations? All in favor of Doris Black being our legislative liaison? Let it be known by a sign of aye? Those opposed? Motion carried. Doris is our legislative liaison. Thank you. We have our slate of officers. Next on the agenda, approvals. Can I get a motion for approval of a constant agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Let it be known by a sign of aye? Those opposed? Motion carried. Approval of our agenda. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the agenda.
I second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Let it be known by a sign of aye? Those opposed? Motion carried. And I think we didn't have anyone signed up for public comments. Is that correct? Okay. Okay, JCMCA President Announcements Report? Not any?
He's here.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Hey, reports. Financial, Mr. Washington?
Ray, this Bart Ross Plumbing, where are they from? Are they a Jackson company?
Yes, that's a company. I don't know how big they are.
Okay. Sure. Yeah.
And Mr. Washington? On the general purpose school fund, 141, at the, at the bottom, where the revenues over expenditures, so at the line on the remaining budget, so we're about $10 million better than budget.
When we look at revenues, right now, we have your prior year today expenditures and revenues have not come in yet. So of course, BEP comes in increments, drawn on its funding, and it gets about a year, so we don't do it all at once. And so year-to-date, right now, we just got revenues are negative 84, 84, which is up to figure out.
No, under the remaining budget line, which is one, two, three, four, the sixth column, column number six, on the general purpose budget.
Sure, okay. Yeah, so in that case, so for instance, at the top, we almost spent 80% of what we budgeted for going into school one month. So throughout the year, you see that change. We got, we got business school for one month, so remaining budget will be pretty tall. We have to adjust. Most of the money right now, regular education, structure, remaining budget of 45 million, based on that's all these dollars. And like now, we're 80% if we own business school one month.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Ray, the operation plant line 72610, we're at 38.6 a month in.
Yes, so what we do is uncover a lot about parts and open to where we may not expect to uncover those things.
Gotcha.
Or things like, you know, that we know we're going to purchase in the upcoming year, that are all about the control of the job, one, five, six.
I know you already said, but nothing of concern on here, other than kind of, okay.
Any questions for Mr. Washington? Okay, thank you. Mr. Washington, human resource report, Dr. Catlett?
Yes, sir. Dr. King, we're moving back to August 14th capital. See transportation, four new hires, two transferred, four resignations, transportation, no movement in maintenance, food service, one requirement for resignations. School, 22 new hires, six transposed, 15 resignations. Then central office, no movement. Then district, leads, 17, ticket vacancies were set currently. That's what we're, questions?
Any questions for Dr. Catlett?
Dr. Catlett, how many vacancies did you say we had?
Seventeen vacancies.
Seventeen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's good.
Dr. Catlett, have we made any reviews as far as filling those positions? What have you done in order to open it up for individuals to come in?
Yes, ma'am. Well, actually, we've signed off. So this is an August report. We've already received recommendations from some other schools. We've already signed off. That number's down below seven currently for next month already. We're going, we're working to get 100% staff. So we're recruiting, going around to support staff, see what school staff would like to maybe talk to us about becoming teachers, teaching as a profession. Have a good meeting with principals about class, students, teaching as a profession as a class for them in the future. So we've got a proof of plan in place that we're working toward so that we'll have approval of applicants that, you know, we can fill those positions with. So our human capital department, we work hard to continuously recruit, outreach to universities around, make sure that we have a pool available for those teaching positions. So we're not going to be satisfied to get 100% for this staff.
Also, thanks a lot. We talked about the science school. And just wanted to see if those positions, as far as teachers, have been filled? And if so, how many African-Americans have you recruited in order to get into the science school again? We talked about that.
We did. Science school recommendations were made by principals and their schools to adopt between. We need three special, need special education teachers that we posted those positions. So right now, only thing that she has is those three special education positions. So we're constantly recruiting to fill those and then she'll be full of staff.
Last question is this. Do we just reach out, out of the state of Tennessee and open up this in case somebody wants to fill a position here? Or is it just within the state of Tennessee or is it just within our county that we?
No, ma'am, it's, it's across the country. On our Memphis channel, has a school search for any positions that we post across the country. So people from Michigan, Minnesota, West Tennessee, East Tennessee, all over the country can look and see what we have open. And then we reach out to those applicants, try to get them in to either do a virtual Skype interview or come, you know, see our campuses. So we're really working hard to get a plan, to have improvement, this continual improvement and grow our own staff as well.
One more question. Are all of the teachers that the places are filled, are they all certified? Or how many do you have with provisional license?
Well, we have some African that move in to get to there. I can't take the number off the top of my head. But we are working to get those students, those applicants certified. So as an example, if we had a teacher's assistant right now who wanted to go back to school to get their certification, we have to get them into a dedicated license program with university. So we have some of those that were working through those universities to get those, those applicants fully certified. So that's a process and it takes two to three years depending on, you know, the program at the school. So yes, ma'am, we do have provisional license. But they're considered certified when they complete their requirement to make university.
Any other questions for Dr. Catlett? Thank you, Dr. Catlett. Next, action item, legislative amendments. Mr. Washington?
As you know, last, the outline, there's some legislative amendments that the school board approved, the Board of Directors board approved. The first had a bunch of amendments that were four of them after the Florida board approved. First, Fund 141, $97,500, acting as this amendment transfers available funds for digital origin. Fund 142, federal program for Crocker, this amendment, $8,635. This amendment aligns ATSI to 2018 designated rate. This amendment aligns original estimated by 21 months, the actual rule of budget includes carryover fund. Number three, federal program. $500, final night of rate. This amendment aligns general ledger to the base of one budget approved by the state. Number four, $6,000. CT permanent basis rate. This amendment aligns the general ledger to the state's original. So we're limited to four more of them. Next, we have amendments that are filed down in the mission for a long school. Fund One Forty-One, two million, five hundred thousand dollars. This amendment transfers funds from general purpose funds, one forty-one federal project, one forty-two, cash flow, combined universal grant, including TSSR grant funded by the care of that. In a nutshell, we have a care of that line, that's combined. We find those expenditures and grant reverses us, so we have to have the money in cash flow to pay for these things that we afford, the group cares, rent, like devices and things of that nature. We have the cash flow that shows the money to reverse. So just explanation for that, that. Number two, seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars insurance coverage, fund received for life and damage delivery high school. Number three, five thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars technology, this amendment transfer fund pays life to the high school employees for assistance of their websites and news events and information. Number four, six hundred dollars, four-day adult school program. This amendment allows the general ledger to the bridge in one approved by the state. Next, Fund One Forty-Two, school thorough projects. Once again, two million, five hundred thousand dollars transfer from one forty-one to one forty-two is explained for federal project, cash flow projects, funded by cares, added to TSSR. Fund One Seventy-Seven, education capital, looking at number six, two thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. This is insurance coverage, fund received for family, for long system, as south side possible. Those are the budget amendments.
I have a question, Mr. Doctor.
Yes?
I think I missed is, uh, same before, uh, the money is being transferred from one allocation to another. Uh, is there a record count for that particularly?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, and is there any way that we could get copies of that, just to, uh, make sure it's more transparent? I know I see it here, but I'm just saying as far as a record, uh, anytime that monies are being allocated from one particular area to another? And I think I had asked a request that it be done for like a past year, uh, but, uh, I'd never be getting anything.
Okay, so well, I'll make a note that all the budget amendments for that year, you just want a copy of?
Just, yeah, just the monies that have been transferred from one area to, to the next.
Okay, one eye, one other.
Right, uh-huh.
Sure, I'll make a note of that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Washington?
Yes?
Uh, on the, the same page we're counting, and school board has approved, on item number one and number five, uh, those two, uh, so that's five million dollars we're pulling from, from our fund balance until the, uh...
Now, some of one forty-one is a separate budget, federal project, but then once we get to it all, we'll reverse it, so one forty-one back.
Okay, okay.
So it's transfer, transfer, cash flow projects, and then when the government, the federal fund comes back in, we'll reverse one forty-one.
Any other questions for Mr. Washington?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to commend Dr. King and your staff for bringing in the grant money. I've noticed that we're getting quite a few, and we appreciate that. Thank you, you and the whole team, thank you.
Absolutely, great job. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the budget amendments, please?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, let it be known by a sound of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carried. Uh, next, on Buzzman contract. Dr. Williams, you covering that?
I'll be checking.
Okay.
We own the Buzzman contract, each hour presented today, uh, for the scope of services, very similar to last year, with the chapter of the group's number of students. We have forty students, and the focus is on a new school. So that's what we have presented today for, for. Are there any questions about the Buzzman contract? Or maybe, uh, I'm trying to do a, uh, a little bit more.
Any questions for Dr. Washington?
Hello?
Yeah, Dr. King?
Mr. Thompson's here from Nashville, and we appreciate you for driving down the shore and showing us your support for, uh, working with us. Thank you so much for coming.
Okay, so all board members had a hard copy and also BOE, uh, online for that document. So any questions for Dr. Williams? There's no question, you got a motion to approve?
Mr. Can I make a motion to approve this contract?
You got a motion?
Right.
You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, thank you. School report.
It is our school report for school support organizations, and if you notice, we have high school, Southside High School Competition Cheer, Southside High School Girls Basketball, Southside High School Lady Hawk Soccer, Southside, uh, High School Rebounders Club, Northside High Band Booster, and Madison Core Booster, we're request, and also Rose Hill PTA requesting the board to approve those organizations.
Any questions about school report? Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, any questions? All in favor, let it be known by a sound of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Uh, do we have any committee reports?
No, just, uh, we will re-start our committee meetings, uh, this month, long-range planning meets the, um, fourth Thursday of each month.
Okay. Okay, with that, with that, um, if each board member would, uh, send Demetria, our board secretary, uh, the committees that you'd like to serve on, she would forward that to me, the information to me, so we can get the committees set up. Uh, we have, uh, several committees, uh, insurance committee, technology committee, policy committee, long-range planning committee, budget committee, uh, education vision committee meeting, committee. Uh, we also have, um, uh, sick leave committee, and, um, I think that is the, politics committee, I mentioned that one. Those are the listed committees, so I ask her also to send you a copy of all the committees, and would you let her, uh, know, she'll forward the information to me, committees you'd like to serve on, and we'll get those appointments made. Okay, next up, superintendent report.
It is a great day to be in Jackson-Madison County school system. I want to talk about the support that we have received from partners in the community stakeholders, and just the, uh, collaboration that we've had with our return to school safe, uh, team, just different ones throughout the community are so willing to help us navigate through something that we hadn't ever done before, and so that's why it's a great day. United Way has been gracious, uh, in providing hotspots for, uh, many of our students and families. We've had, uh, Jackson-Housen Authority, United Way, Matt Marshall, Jackson-Housen Authority, uh, with Mark Reed, providing hotspots for his different communities, just been, just phenomenal to have that level of support. Toyota USA Foundation, uh, just, uh, gave us a grant for two hundred thousand dollars to purchase devices, software, and various things as, as it relates to providing, uh, opportunities for students to continue learning through virtual space. Our safe, uh, return to school team met, uh, this week and last week, and we are very excited to start bringing many of our students back. Uh, we will be bringing back those families who chose the in-person option. We will focus on those families right now and get tho, them, those students in schools. After, uh, getting our in-person students, there is a cutoff and a deadline for those families who chose the virtual option. But our priority right now is going to be getting our in-person students back, those families who had chosen that option first, and then we will work with our virtual, uh, families, uh, on that deadline. I want to say the deadline is, uh, September, the, if I'm not mistaken, for the virtual to decide to switch over, uh, it is September, uh, twenty-first week? Is that right?
Twenty-eighth is when the sign-up starts.
The sign-up starts September twenty-eighth, and so we'll have a better gauge as we return students. We have been feeding students in the past, we fed students five days a week. Uh, I petitioned the State Department to allow us to feed students seven days a week. Uh, our numbers of feeding students last year during school session was about ten thousand meals a day, and when we started feeding a couple of weeks ago, we were feeding nine hundred students, and now we're feeding about three thousand students. That's still shy seven thousand meals, when you think about it. And so what we're doing now, we're going to make sure that we provide meals seven days a week. Uh, if we don't have healthy students, we have a problem. And so we have to make sure that we can do all on our part, uh, to provide that for them. Uh, so the averages continued to rise, uh, for those meals. I really appreciate Dr. Catlett and Ms. Power for working, and the cafeteria staffs. We have three schools that made a one hundred, am I right, on, uh, the kitchen staff?
Mm-hmm.
If I can recall, I want to say it's Denmark, West Bemis, and Alexander. I think I'm right now, I, my memory, I'm getting old, but I think I remember that. Am I right, Dr. Catlett? So kudos to those cafeteria managers, kudos to those school leaders at cafeteria staff, they are nailing the one hundred, again, hashtag winning. Uh, our athletic competitions, we have Tech, Liberty Tech hosts Chester County, um, tomorrow, Southside hosts Harden County, and Northside will travel to Lexington. I commend the school administrators, I commend Mr. Gilmer, again, working with Dr. Catlett, to have provided great experience with our athletes, uh, make concern that we, uh, reduced the spread of COVID, and still following the social distance guideline and being able, uh, to participate in these competitions. It's important that students have this, uh, opportunity to engage and play, so we're excited about that. We received a leaps grant. Ms. Smith was here, and she left, uh, I was going to recognize her, she, uh, Ms. Smith worked at Liberty, and she worked on this after-school grant for us early on, and we received one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars over a three-year period. That's just one of the many grants that we've been receiving. I appreciate Dr. Williams, uh, and Dr. Catlett, I've been giving, I think I've given Dr. Williams more grants, uh, within the last four weeks, and I appreciate her, I think we have another couple more grants that we'll be announcing soon. So I appreciate her leadership, but also Ms. Smith who took that, and I would not take no for an answer from her, so I really appreciate it for that. And lastly, I certainly appreciate the partnership that I have with the JMCIA. Uh, it's been a pleasure working with, uh, Mr. Davis, and also the board. Uh, we will continue to work together and, and make things happen for kids and families. We can't thank you enough, uh, for just being patient with us. We know in some cases you might not have what you need, but I tell you this much, you all have been very gracious, and, uh, we're going to do everything we can to serve you. Thank you so much, that's my report.
Any questions for Dr. King? Any questions? If not, um, I want to commend Dr. King and his team and administration, um, for the great communications, and you can't miss, uh, any social media outlet, um, through the school website, uh, there's always communications daily and sometimes more, once during the day. Uh, the transparency has been excellent, and a quick turnaround on parent, uh, questions and issues, especially during the, uh, this transition, uh, with, uh, cyber school, um, virtual school, and all the things that's going on, uh, they've been to a minimum. I think that's, uh, excellent, and it's a, uh, credit to, uh, the excellent team you have. The other thing I, uh, want to mention, and I think, uh, sometimes, uh, we miss it, a lot of times in, uh, Dr. King's communications, he talked about our twenty-fourth school, our twenty-fourth school, our cyber school. We have twenty-fourth school, and so I hope, uh, and we'll be, uh, working with Dr. Kings to do a, official launch of our twenty-fourth school. We have growth, uh, in the middle of a pandemic, and I think that's, uh, commendable. You hear that? The largest school in the district, our cyber school.
Wow.
Wow, absolutely. Let's give his team a round of applause. We have growth in the middle of a pandemic, man. Unquestionable great leadership. Uh, next on the agenda, we have an announcement, official announcement, uh, from our fellow board member, Shannon Stewart.
Um, I'm going to take my mask off. Um, I had to write a statement, so I would make sure that I said everything I was supposed to say, but I'm very sad to announce that, um, I must resign from my position on the Jackson-Madison County School Board effective December eleventh of this year. Um, my family will be moving in the next few months for my husband to pursue a change in location with his law firm. Um, while I am sad to have to resign from my position, um, with the school board, we are very excited about the opportunities that lie ahead for our family. Um, that said, I have a few people I want to thank, um, and the funny thing is, is a lot of them are usually here at the meeting, and I didn't want to hurt their feelings by not mentioning them, but they're not here. So, um, first of all, I want to thank, uh, the constituents of District Five, um, just for entrusting me and believing in me and giving me the opportunity to serve, um, our wonderful community of Jackson. Uh, most of you know that I was not born here, and I was not raised here, but this city and this county have raised me, and, um, I've never lived anywhere as long as I've lived in Jackson, Tennessee, and so it will be home. And so I'm thankful for this community, I'm also thankful for all the wonderful administrators and teachers who have loved my family and my children, um, as they have educated them over the past many years. Um, I want to say a special thank you to Mr. Guthrie and his staff at Madison, who shepherded my oldest child, who just graduated from there in May, through her four crazy years of high school. Um, and I know, um, that, you know, they impacted my child's life just like they do the other five hundred-plus students who are at that school every day. And I do, um, I am thankful, and, um, Chris and Chris were here earlier, and they talked to us about the new building at Madison, so I'm very thankful that I was able to pay, play a very small part in allowing Madison academic to receive a new, um, building. I also, um, want to thank Dr. Melinda Harris and her staff, Community Montessori, including so many of the teachers that have loved my younger girls so well. Um, I have, um, y'all know I don't make any bones about, um, how much I love Mr. Lewis and his team at Early College High, how I really wish that I had graduated from JCM, um, but it has been really encouraging to know that, um, that that school is in great hands, and, um, that they will continue to do amazing things on that campus. Um, he also has one of the smallest, I think his staff is the smallest staff in our district, and the things that they do are just, it, every time I see statistics about that school, I'm blown away. Um, I also want to thank Ms. Caldwell at Alexander for allowing me to come into her school building every single week and be a coach for Team Reed. Um, you know, that was on my list of things that I was going to miss when I left this community, is being a coach at Team Reed and being able to walk into the doors of that school at Alexander, that is in my neighborhood, every single week. And so, um, and I have watched Ms. Caldwell build her teachers into wonderful teachers, and empower them to do the hard work that they have to do every day, and so I'm so thankful for that. I've also been overwhelmed, um, by the work of Ms. Dorsey at Andrew Jackson, um, and the way that they have been able to come up with creative, innovative strategies to get families in the neighborhood onboard at Andrew Jackson. I've just been very impressed by that. Um, and they're, they're a level four school right there in, in my neighborhood, and I'm so proud. Um, last but not least, I have loved watching the growth at Arlington Elementary, um, because my oldest daughter, who's thirteen and in the eighth grade now, did her first four years of school there, and I have seen the transformation in that school since Kippy Jordan became the principal, and I am just, um, just so proud. And so those are the schools in District Five, of course, I love all of our twenty-four schools. Um... um, but the ones that are in the heart of my district have my heart, they're in my neighborhood, um, those children are my neighbors. And, um, I just am very thankful for the opportunity that I've had to serve this community over the past two years, and I look forward to closing out my service in the next cup, coming months. Like I said, I'm going to reiterate this again, y'all aren't rid of me yet, I will be here until December the eleventh. So, um, so for the next three months, y'all still have to put up with my crazy at our meetings. And Chairman Johnson, thank you for allowing me to make that announcement.
Thank you, Shannon, for your, for the representation that you've, um, you represented your district and the board real well, and you will, will continue to do that, I'm sure. Um, I know that we had an opportunity to talk about the last two years, and it seems like it's been ten years.
Yes.
We had some ups and downs, uh, we had some agreements and disagreements, but, uh, Shannon's a team player. I've never doubted her commitment to education equity, and that means she cares about all the kids in this district, and I think that's what counts. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
One other announcement, right after the meeting, there's refreshments, now, for everyone. Um, if there's nothing else to bring before the board, can I get a motion to adjourn? Got a motion? That's it? We adjourn. Thank you, guys.